The Chair would like to address this august chamber. Please take your seats. My dearest colleagues, fellow representatives of the people, distinguished guests, our friends from the media, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. There's this old story shared to me some years ago, and I'd like to share it with you today. There was a person who would be born in the Philippines, and the Creator told him, "You may shape the society you shall be born into." The person looked at the Philippines, saw the poverty and despair spread throughout the land, especially outside the national capital region. Given what he saw, the person became cynical. Understandably, no one wants to be poor and destitute. That's why the person chose a family he would be born into, and using the power given to him by the Creator, concentrated the social advantages and opportunities to that family. Thus, the person would have a nice home, plenty to eat, and a comfortable life ahead. The Creator then checked up on the person and asked him, "Are you ready?" The person replied, "Yes, and I have also chosen the family I shall be part of and made beneficial arrangements." The Creator taken aback and said, "Wait a minute, you do not get to choose which family you will be born into." The person was shocked and disappointed given the uncertainty he suddenly had to confront. What if he were born into a poor and underprivileged family? He would hardly get a shot at a good and dignified life. The person therefore asked the Creator for more time. Out of kindness, the Creator accommodated his request. Rather than concentrate opportunities in the hands of a few, the person dismantled his previous design. Instead, he broadened and spread opportunities beyond Manila and made it accessible to all Filipinos. By doing so, regardless of where or to which family the person would be born into, he had a fair fighting chance at opportunity and the rewards that came with hard work during his life here on Earth. This story shared to me many years ago has stayed in my memory. I will never forget the lessons it imparts, especially this one. "At the end of the day, bilog ang mundo at lahat tayo, no exception, mayaman man o mahirap, makapangyarihan o dukha, ay kasama sa ikot ng kapalaran." My colleagues in the House of Representatives, we were elected by the Filipino people, all of whom had no say as to which parents and family they will be born into. Unfortunately, here in the Philippines, this genetic lottery significantly shapes the destiny of our people. And that is why it is our duty as their representatives to do what the person did when he was confronted and humbled by the uncertainty that comes with being underprivileged. We have to level the playing field and maximize as well as spread opportunities for all. This is the governing spirit behind what we have accomplished in this chamber for the past two years. From July 2016 and as of today, we have processed 2,929 legislative measures and enacted 133 bills that are now law of the land. During the second regular session alone, the President signed 128 bills into law. Our record is as follows. In the field of education and investment in our youth, we created 13 additional public schools. We also increased the budget of the Department of Education by 10 billion pesos and made access to tertiary education in state universities and colleges universal. To protect our youth from the dangerous risks of joining societies and organizations, we strengthened the anti-hazing act. We also enacted the Mental Health Act, which provides our people, especially students, with additional assistance in dealing with mental health concerns. Sound body, sound mind. We also worked hard to improve the standards of education and training through the Philippine Qualifications Framework Act, which aligns domestic qualifications with international standards. Filipinos now have a better chance at competing with the best and brightest the world has to offer. Beyond education, let us talk about jobs. Without business, there will be no private sector jobs. And that is why we made it easier to do business in the Philippines through the Ease of Doing Business Act. To supplement this initiative, access to capital through formal financial institutions rather than only those five, six arrangements is necessary. We have enacted the Financial Inclusion Act, transmitted the same to the President, and should he find it worthy of his signature, it will soon be law of the land. While businesses are important, we must be mindful that businesses, when left unchecked, may exploit instead of help uplift its employees. To address this, we strengthen compliance with occupational and health standards in the workplace. We have also passed on third and final reading a bill which strengthens the security of tenures of workers. We took forward to working hand in hand with our counterparts in the Senate for this bill to hurdle the legislative process. It wouldn't make sense for Filipinos to educate themselves, work hard, and not taste the fruits of their labor. Hence, we reformed the tax code which led to an increase in the take-home pay of Filipino taxpayers. There are, of course, inflationary concerns. These, however, are short-term hiccups and are vastly outweighed by the overall long-term benefits that our country will reap with this historic reform. Looking into the future, to sustain the gains we now enjoy, we have to invest in science and technology. Who better to help, help us in this other than Filipino scientists scattered across the world? Hopefully, we give them additional reason to come back home through the Balik Scientist Act. Another top priority necessary for the orderly function of society is peace and order. As we meet here today, our military and uniform personnel are manning garisons to keep the Filipino people safe from harm. We have fulfilled our promise to raise their salaries as reward for their hard work. This also serves us, a deterrent against the temptations to engage in corruption due to the desperation that comes along with poverty. My colleagues, as you see, the 17th Congress and this administration has worked hard to spread opportunities to all by hitting key strategic areas for growth and development: education, health, labor and employment, business, finance, tax, science, and technology, peace and order, and professionalism by curbing corruption in the ranks of those who protect us. These legislative accomplishments have no precedent in the history of the Philippine Congress, but we are not done yet. Through an arduous bicameral conference committee, we have finally finished the Bangsa Moro Organic Law. It will be presented to the President for his consideration. That piece of legislative document is a giant leap towards the promise of peace and prosperity, both of which have long eluded the island and the people of Mindanao. All of this could not have been possible had it not been for hard-working congressmen, the House leadership, our colleagues in the Senate, and committee chairpersons, their members, and the secretariat staff, and of course, with a special mention of our very hard-working and intelligent majority leader, Congressman Rudy Farías. I'd want to personally thank you right now, one by one, for all your efforts. However, time constraints do not allow me to do so. Nonetheless, please know that I am grateful and proud of your work you have done. Looking back at what we have accomplished, I do hope that the person I told you about, the one who will be born in the Philippines, will be less apprehensive and fearful. After all, he has seen that the Congress of the Filipino people, through far from perfect, has tried its best to broaden and spread access to opportunities for all. But admittedly, there is still much work to be done as we start the third regular session. And this involves dismantling one of the most extractive institutions that has robbed the rest of the Philippines, with the exception of a few cities, of its chance to fully realize its potential for growth and development. I'm talking about the 1987 Constitution. The primary reason why many critics claim there's no need for charter change is because the problems of the Philippines should be blamed at bad people running the government. They posit that people are the center of the problem and charters are inconsequential. Hence, no need to change the Constitution. This position is untenable. Experts from the fields of economics, political science, developmental studies, both here and abroad, have a consensus about what is necessary to cure an ailing nation. And they have pinpointed the fundamental issue that must be addressed. If for business, it's about location, location, and location. If for banks, it's about capital, capital, capital. When it comes to development of nations, it boils down to institutions, institutions, and institutions. And what is the mother of all institutions here in the Philippines? It's the 1987 Constitution. We gave it a head start of 30 years. Has it successfully produced a virtuous cycle that led to prosperity and opportunity for all? Or has it proven itself to be an extractive institution that benefits some at the expense of the many? Yes, bad people are also responsible for the mess that we are presently in. But to miss the bigger picture and fail to understand the role that institutions play in the puzzle of prosperity and development for our nation will seal our fate and preserve with jocritty as status quo. We have to do something about this. There are many drafts proposing changes to our charter. The three most prominent ones are as follows. First is the draft of our Committee on Constitutional Amendments. Second is the draft by PDP Laban Federalism Institute. And finally, third, the draft from the Consultative Committee led by retired Chief Justice Renato Puno. The topics covered by said proposals are numerous as they try to address the deficiencies and flaws of the 1987 Constitution. These are too many to mention as we speak to you now, but will be further discussed in the committees and meetings. Nonetheless, a very important issue raised in the drafts that must be specially and specifically mentioned is the issue involving political dynasties. I have manifested and made public that I am amenable to anti-political dynasty provision as proposed by the Consultative Committee draft. However, I have also made it clear, based on my personal studies and consultation with peers, that political dynasties proliferated because of the unintended effects of imposing term limits. Let's push for the self-executory anti-political dynasty provision para rin wala nang pipilitin sa pamilya tumakbo kahit ayaw naman talaga. But I propose that term limits be removed. If we succeed, and I am confident we will succeed, that the difficult reforms we intend to accomplish, I am sure that the person I told you about, the guy who had no say as to where and to which family he will be born into, rather than worry about being born in the Philippines, he will just smile and say, "It's okay, I can be born anywhere in the archipelago. It doesn't matter which family I shall be as a child of." Because opportunities are vastly spread to the point that hard work will have its rewards and privilege won't matter much anymore. This is the Filipino dream. Together, let us realize it. Thank you, good morning, and may God bless the Philippines. The Secretary-General will now call the role of members of the House of Representatives selected from legislative districts apportioned among the provinces, cities, and municipal metropolitan area and party list organization.
Welcome of members by provinces, cities, and municipalities comprising districts and party list. National Capital Region: Caloocan City, First District, Honorable Dale Alon R. Malapitan. Second District: Honorable Edgar R. Erice. Makati City, First District: Honorable Manuel Monsur T. Del Rosario III. Second District: Honorable Luis N. Campos Jr. Malabon City, Loan District: Honorable Federico Ricky S. Sandobal II. Mandaloyong City, Loan District: Honorable Alexandria P. Gonzales. City of Manila, First District: Honorable Manuel Luis T. Lopez. Second District: Honorable Carlo B. Lopez. Third District: Honorable Jean Marvin Yul Serbo C. Nieto. Fourth District: Honorable Edward Beraperes Maceda. Fifth District: Honorable Crystal L. Bagat Sing. Sixth District: Honorable Rosenda Ann Ocampo. Marikina City, First District: Honorable Wayani F. Fernando. Second District: Honorable Romero Miro Esquimbo. Montelupa City, Loan District: Honorable Rapino, Rosano Rapino B. Biazon. Nabota City, Loan District: Honorable Tobias Toby M. Tianco. Parañaque City, First District: Honorable Eric L. Olivares. Second District: Honorable Gus S. Tambunting. Pasay City, Loan District: Honorable M. G. Calixto Rubiano. Pasig City, Loan District: Honorable Richard C. Ilsebio. Quezon City, First District: Honorable Vincent Bingbong P. Crisologo. Second District: Honorable Winston Winnie Castelo. Third District: Honorable George Bolet Banal. Fourth District: Honorable Feliciano Belmonte Jr. Fifth District: Honorable Alfred D. Vargas. Sixth District: Honorable Jose Christopher Y. Belmonte. San Juan City, Loan District: Honorable Ronaldo B. Samora. Taguig City, Pateros, First District: Honorable Arnold M. Sarafica. Second District: Honorable Pia S. Cayetano. Valenzuela City, First District: Honorable Wes Gachalian. Second District: Honorable Eric M. Martinez. Region One, Ilocos. Ilocos Norte with the cities of Ploag and Batac. First District: Honorable Rodolfo C. Faríneas. Second District: Honorable Emerda R. Marcos. Ilocos Sur with the cities of Bigan and Candon. First District: Honorable Diograsas Victor D. B. Sabelliano. Second District: Honorable Eric D. Singson. La Union with the city of San Fernando. First District: Honorable Pablo C. Ortega. Second District: Honorable Sandra Y. Erigel M.D. Pangasinan with the cities of Dagupan, San Carlos, Alaminos, and Ordaneta. First District: Honorable Jesús Voying F. Celeste. Second District: Honorable Repoldo N. Batawil. Third District: Honorable Rosemary Baby J. Arenas. Fourth District: Honorable Christopher BP de Benesia. Fifth District: Honorable Amando T. Espino Jr. Sixth District: Honorable Marlin L. Primicias Agabas. Region Two, Cagayan Valley: Cagayan with the city of Tugigarao. First District: Honorable Ramon C. Nolasco. Second District: Honorable Baby Alan Vargas Alfonso. Third District: Honorable Randolph S. Ting. Isabela with the cities of Kawayan, Ilagan, and Santiago. First District: Honorable Rodolfo T. Albano III. Second District: Honorable Ana Cristina Sikian Go. Third District: Honorable Lapolion S. D. Fourth District: Honorable Malia Lourdes R. Agabao. Nueva Vizcaya, Loan District: Honorable Luisa Lloren Cuarezma. Quirino, Loan District: Honorable Daquila Carlo I. Kua. Region Three, Central Luzon: Aurora, Loan District: Honorable Beljaflor J. Angara Castilio. Bataan with the city of Balanga: First District: Honorable Geraldine B. Roman. Second District: Honorable Jose Enrique Jowett S. Garcia III. Bulacan with the cities of Malolos and May Kawayan: First District: Honorable Kuya Jose Antonio R. C. Alvarado. Second District: Honorable Gabini Apple C. Panche. Third District: Honorable Lorna C. Silberio. Fourth District: Honorable Linavel Ruth R. Biliarica. San Jose del Monte City, Loan District: Honorable Florida Rita P. Robes. Nueva Isija with the cities of Cabanatuan, Palayan, San Jose, Gapan, and Munyos. First District: Honorable Esterilita B. Swan Sing. Second District: Honorable Michaela S. Violago. Third District: Honorable Rosana Ria Vergara. Fourth District: Honorable Magnolia C. Antonin. Ampanga with the cities of Angeles, Mabalaca, and San Fernando. First District: Honorable Carmelo John B. Lasatin II. Second District: Honorable Gloria Mahapagal Arroyo. Third District: Honorable Aurelio Dong D. Gonzalez Jr. Fourth District: Honorable Juan Pablo Rimpi P. Bondok. Tarlac with the city of Tarlac: First District: Honorable Carlos O. Chuanco. Second District: Honorable Victor A. Yap. Third District: Honorable Noel L. Bilyanueva. Zambales with the city of Olongapo: First District: Honorable Jeffrey D. Konghun. Second District: Honorable Cheryl P. Deloso Montalia. Region Four, A. Calabarzon: Batangas with the cities of Batangas, Lipa, and Tanawan. First District: Honorable Elinita Milagros Eileen Ermita Buain. Second District: Honorable Reneo Rani I. Abu. Third District: Honorable Maria Teresa B. Coliantes. Fourth District: Honorable Leanda B. Bolilia. Fifth District: Batangas City: Honorable Mario Vittorio Marbi A. Mariño. Sixth District: Lipa City: Honorable Wilma Santos Reckto. Cabite with the cities of Tagaitai, Cabite, Tresemartires, Bacoor, Imus, Dasmarinas, and General Trias. First District: Honorable Francis Gerald A. Abaya. Second District: Honorable Strike B. Rebilia. Third District: Honorable Alex A. A. L. Advincula. Fifth District, Honorable Roy M. Loyola. Sixth District, Honorable Luis John John A. Ferrer IV. Seventh District, Honorable Abraham Bambol M. Tolentino. Laguna with the cities of San Pablo, Cabuyao, San Pedro, Santa Rosa, and Calamba. First District, Honorable Arlene B. Arcillas. Second District, Honorable Joaquin M. Tepeco Jr. Third District, Honorable Saul Aragonés. Fourth District, Honorable Benjamin C. Agarao Jr. Binyan City, Lone District, Honorable Marlin B. Alonte. Quezon with the cities of Luzena and Tayabas. First District, Honorable Anna Katrina M. N. Verga. Second District, Honorable Vicente Culit J. Alcala. Third District, Honorable Danilo I. Juárez. Fourth District, Honorable Angelina Helen D. Eltan M.D. Rizal, First District, Honorable Michael John R. Duavit. Second District, Honorable Isidro S. Rodriguez Jr. Antipolo City, First District, Honorable Cristina Chiki Rowapuno. Second District, Honorable Romeo M. Acop. Region 4, B. M. Maropa. Marinduke, Lone District, Honorable Lord Alan J. Q. Velasco. Central Mindoro, Lone District, Honorable Josephin Ramirez Sato. Oriental Mindoro with the city of Kalapon. First District, Honorable Doi C. Leachon. Second District, Honorable Reynaldo B. Umali. Palawan with the city of Puerto Princesa. First District, Honorable Franz E. Álvarez. Second District, Honorable Frederick Eric F. Abwig. Third District, Honorable Hill Cabarangay P. Acosta. Ramblón, Lone District, Honorable Emanuel F. Madrona. Region 5, Bicol. Albay with the cities of Legaspi, Ligau, and Tabaco. First District, Honorable Edsel C. Lagman. Second District, Honorable Joey Sartes Alceda. Third District, Honorable Fernando V. Gonzalez. Camarines Norte, First District, Honorable Renato J. Unico Jr. Second District, Honorable Marisol C. Panotes. Camarines Sur with the cities of Naga and Iriga. First District, Honorable Rolando G. Andaya Jr. Second District, Honorable Luis Raymond F. Villafuerte Jr. Third District, Honorable Gabriel H. Bordado Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Arnulpo P. Fentebelia. Fifth District, Honorable Salvio B. Fortuno. Catanduanes, Lone District, Honorable Cesar B. Sarmiento. Masbate with the city of Masbate. First District, Honorable Maria Vida Espinoza Bravo. Second District, Honorable Elisa Olga T. Co. Third District, Honorable Scott Davis S. Lanete M.D. Sorsagón with the city of Sorsagón. First District, Honorable Evelina G. Escudero. Second District, Honorable Diograsias B. Ramos Jr. Region 6, Western Visayas. Aklan, Lone District, Honorable Carlito S. Marquez. Antique, Lone District, Honorable Paulo E. Berardo S. Javier. Capiz with the city of Rojas. First District, Honorable Emanuel A. Billiones. Second District, Honorable Fred Neil Fred H. Castro. Guimarães, Lone District, Honorable Malia Lucille L. Naba M.D. Iloilo with the city of Pasay. First District, Honorable Oscar Richard S. Garin Jr. Second District, Honorable Arcadio H. Gorisetta. Third District, Honorable Arthur R. Depensoor Jr. Fourth District, Honorable Perjanel G. Veron M.D. Fifth District, Honorable Raúl Buboy C. Tukas. Iloilo City, Lone District, Honorable Jerry P. Treñas. Negroes Occidental with the cities of San Carlos, Addis, Bago, La Carlota, Silay, Kabankalan, Sagay, Victorias, Escalante, Sipalay, Himamaylan, and Talisay. First District, Honorable Milecio J. Yap Jr. Second District, Honorable Leo Rafael M. Cueva. Third District, Honorable Alfredo Albi B. Benítez. Fourth District, Honorable Juliet Marie D. Ferrer. Fifth District, Honorable Alejandro Y. Mirasol. Sixth District, Honorable Mercedes K. Álvarez. Bacolod City, Lone District, Honorable Greg G. Gasataya. Region 7, Central Visayas. Bohol with the city of Tagbilaran. First District, Honorable Rene L. Relampagos. Second District, Honorable Erico Aristotl C. Omentado. Third District, Honorable Arthur C. Yap. Cebu with the cities of Danao, Mandawe, Toledo, Bugo, Carcar, Naga, and Talisay. First District, Honorable Gerald Anthony Samsam B. Gulyas Jr. Second District, Honorable Wilfredo S. Caminero. Third District, Honorable Gwendoline F. Garcia. Fourth District, Honorable Benhar L. Salimbangan. Fifth District, Honorable Ramon Red H. Durano VI. Sixth District, Honorable Jonas C. Cortez. Seventh District, Honorable Peter John D. Calderón. Cebu City, First District, Honorable Raúl B. Delmar. Second District, Honorable Rodrigo A. Abelianosa. Lapulapu City, Lone District, Honorable Eileen C. Radasa. Negroes Oriental with the cities of Baís, Canlaon, Dumagete, Bayawan, Tanhai, and Ginhulnan. First District, Honorable Joselyn C. Limkaisong. Second District, Honorable Manuel T. Sagarbaria. Third District, Honorable Arnulpo Arni A. Tevez Jr. Chiquor, Lone District, Honorable Ramon B. A. Rab Rocamora. Region 8, Eastern Visayas. Biliran, Lone District, Honorable Rogelia J. Espina M.D. Eastern Samar with the city of Borongan. Lone District, Honorable Ben P. Ebardoni. Later with the cities of Tacloban, Hormo, and Baybay. First District, Honorable Yeda Marie K. Romualdes. Second District, Honorable Henry C. Ong. Third District, Honorable Vicente Chin S. I. Beloso. Fourth District, Honorable Lucy T. Gómez. Fifth District, Honorable Jose Carlos L. Carré. Northern Samar, First District, Honorable Raúl A. Daza. Second District, Honorable Edwin C. Ong. Samar with the cities of Calbayog and Catbalogan. First District, Honorable Edgar Mary S. Sarmiento. Second District, Honorable Miguel Rosa Mila T. Tan. Northern Later with the city of Maasin. Lone District, Honorable Roger G. Mercado. Region 9, Sanhuanga Peninsula. Sanhuanga del Norte with the cities of Tapitan and Dipolo. First District, Honorable Seth Frederick P. Halosjos. Second District, Honorable Glona G. Labad Labad. Third District, Honorable Isagani S. Amatong. Sanhuanga del Sur with the city of Pagadian. First District, Honorable Divina Grace C. Yu. Second District, Honorable Aurora Enerio Ceriles. Sanbuanga City, First District, Honorable Celso L. Lobrega. Second District, Honorable Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe. Sanhuanga de Bugay, First District, Honorable Wilter Sharkey Wi Palma II. Second District, Honorable Anne K. Hopper. Region 10, Northern Mindanao. Bucadnón with the cities of Malay Balay and Valencia. First District, Honorable Maria Lourdes Acosta Alba. Second District, Honorable Florencio T. Flores Jr. M.D. Third District, Honorable Manuel F. Zubiri. Fourth District, Honorable Rogelia Neil P. Roque. Camigin, Lone District, Honorable Xavier Jesús D. Romualdo. Lanau del Norte, First District, Honorable Muhammad Khalid Q. Dimaporo. Second District, Honorable Abdullah D. Dimaporo. Iligan City, Lone District, Honorable Frederick W. Xiao. Misamis Occidental with the cities of Araketa, Ozzamis, and Tangum. First District, Honorable George T. Almonte. Second District, Honorable Henry S. Oaminal. Misamis Oriental with the cities of Ginhog and El Salvador. First District, Honorable Peter Senor Pedro M. Unavia. Second District, Honorable Juliet T. Ui. Cagayan de Oro City, First District, Honorable Rolando Clarex A. Ui. Second District, Honorable Maximo B. Rodríguez Jr. Region 11, Davao Region. Compostela Valley, First District, Honorable Maria Carmen S. Samora. Second District, Honorable Ruel Peter S. Gonzaga. Davao del Norte with the cities of Tagum, Panabo, and Samal. First District, Honorable Pantalyon D. Álvarez. Second District, Honorable Antonio R. Ploirendo Jr. Davao del Sur with the city of Digos. Lone District, Honorable Mercedes D. D. C. Cagas. Davao City, First District, Honorable Carlo Alexei B. Nograles. Second District, Honorable Maylin J. García Albano. Third District, Honorable Alberto T. Ungab. Davao Occidental, Lone District, Honorable Lorna P. Bautista Bandigan. Davao Oriental with the city of Mati. First District, Honorable Corazon T. Núñez Malanyaon. Second District, Honorable Joel Mayo Z. Almario. Region 12, Socserjen. North Catabato with the city of Kidapawan. First District, Honorable Jesús Nonato Sakdalan. Second District, Honorable Nancy A. Katamco. Third District, Honorable Jose Ping Ping A. Tehada. Sarangani, Lone District, Honorable Rogelia Ruel D. Paciao. South Catabato with the city of General Santos and Coronadal. First District, Honorable Pedro B. Ascheron Jr. Second District, Honorable Ferdinand L. Hernández. Sultan Kudarat with the city of Takurong. First District, Honorable Soharto T. Mangudadato. Second District, Honorable Horacio P. Swan Sing Jr. Autonomous Region in Muslim Mindanao, ARM. Lanau del Sur with the city of Marawi. First District, Honorable Anzarudin A.M.A. Adiyong. Second District, Honorable Mauyag Jun B. Papandayan Jr. Magindanao with the city of Catabato. First District, Honorable Bay Sandra Sin Suwat A. Semah. Second District, Honorable Sahid G. Mangudadato. Sulu, Second District, Honorable Munir M. Arbison. Tawi Tawi, Lone District, Honorable Rubi M. Sahali. Cordillera Administrative Region. Abra, Lone District, Honorable Joseph Santoninho B. Bernos. Apayao, Lone District, Honorable Eleanor C. Volut Bigtang. Benguet, Lone District, Honorable Ronald M. Cosalan. Baguio City, Lone District, Honorable Mark O. Go. Ifugao, Lone District, Honorable Teddy Browner Bagilat Jr. Calinga with the city of Tabuk. Lone District, Honorable Alan Jesse C. Mangawang. Karaga Region, Agusan del Norte with the cities of Butuan and Cabadbaran. First District, Honorable Lawrence H. Fortun. Second District, Honorable Irk John Ping M. Amante. Agusan del Sur with the city of Bayugan. First District, Honorable Maria Valentina G. Plaza. Second District, Honorable Evelyn P. Meliana. Dinagat Islands, Lone District, Honorable Kaka J. Bagaw. Sorregao del Norte with the city of Sorregao. First District, Honorable Francisco Joseph F. Matugas II. Second District, Honorable Robert A. S. Barber. Sorregao del Sur with the city of Tandag and Bislik. First District, Honorable Prospero A. Pichai Jr. Second District, Honorable Johnny T. Pimentel. Party List Representatives. One ang edukasyon, una ang edukasyon, Honorable Salvador B. Belaro Jr. One Care, First Consumers Alliance for Rural Energy Incorporated, Honorable Carlos Roman L. Uy Barreta. One Pacman, One Patriotic Coalition of Marginalized Nationals, Honorable Michael L. Romero PhD, Honorable Enrico A. Pineda. Eight Teacher, Advocacy for Teacher Empowerment Through Action, Cooperation, and Harmony Towards Educational Reforms Incorporated, Honorable Julietta R. Cortuna. Aambis Owa ang Asosasyon sa Mangunguma ng Visaya Owa Mangunguma Incorporated, Honorable Sharon S. Garin. Aangat Tayo, Honorable Harlyn Neil J. Abayon III. Aasenso ating Agapay Sentrong Samahan ng Mangabrero Incorporated, Honorable Teodoro Ted G. Montoro. Abang Lingkod, Abang Lingkod Incorporated, Honorable Joseph Stephen S. Paduano. Abono, Abono Party List, Honorable Conrado M. Estrella III, Honorable Bini Nola A. Ortega. ABS Arts Business and Science Professionals, Honorable Eugene Michael B. De Vera. ACT Teachers, ACT Teachers Party List, Honorable Antonio El Tinio, Honorable Franz L. Castro. ACT OFW, ACTs Versus Filipino Workers Coalition of Organizations, Honorable Aniseto John V. Bertis III. AGAP, Agricultural Sector Alliance of the Philippines, Honorable Rico B. Heron. Agbiag, Agbiag Timpuyog Ilocano Incorporated, Honorable Michelle M. Antonio. Agree, Agree Agra na reforma para sa magsasakan ng Pilipinas Movement, Honorable Delpin Gan Lee, Honorable Orestes T. Salon. Akbayan, Akbayan Citizens Action Party, Honorable Tom S. Biliarin. Ako Bicol, Ako Bicol Political Party, Honorable Rodel M. Batokabe, Honorable Alfredo A. Garbin Jr., Honorable Christopher S. Ko. Alona, Alliance of Organization Networks and Associations of the Philippines Incorporated, Honorable Anna Marie Biliaraza Suárez. Amin, Anak Mindanao Party List, Honorable Mahmoud D. Mending Jr., Honorable Amihilda J. Sangkopan. Anwaray, Honorable Victoria Isabel G. Noel. Anak IP ang In-National Coalition of Indigenous Peoples Action Na Incorporated, Honorable Josetti Panganiban Jr. CPA L.L.B. Anak Pawis, Honorable Ariel Kaayik B. Casilaw. Ang Kabuhayan, Honorable Dennis C. Laugan. Ankla, ang partido ng mga Pilipinong Marino Incorporated, Honorable Jesulito A. Manalo. Bayan Muna, Honorable Carlos Isagani T. Sarate. BH Bagong Generasyon, Honorable Bernadette BH Herrera D. Buhay, buhay hayaan yuma bom, Honorable Mariano Michael M. Belarde Jr., Honorable Jose L. Atienza Jr. Butil, Butil Farmers Party, Honorable Cecilia Leonila B. Chávez. Sibak, Cecehens Battle Against Corruption, Honorable Sherwin N. Tugna. CoopNATCO, Cooperative NATCO Network Party, Honorable Antonio M. Bravo PhD, Honorable Sabbiniano S. Kanama. Diwa, Democratic Independent Workers Association Incorporated, Honorable Emeline Aglipay Bilyar. Gabriela, Gabriela Women's Party, Honorable Emmy A. de Jesús, Honorable Arlene D. Brosas. Kabataan, Kabataan Party List, Honorable Sarah Jane A. Elago. Kabayan, Kabalikat ng Mamamayan, Honorable Sir Yako S. Kalalang, Honorable Ron P. Salo. Calinga, Advocacy for Special Empowerment and Nation Building Through Easing Poverty Incorporated, Honorable Abigail Fay C. Feriol Pascual. Kusug Tausug, Honorable Sherni Abobakar Tan. LPGMA, LPG Marketers Association Incorporated, Honorable Arnold U.T. Magdaló, Magdaló para sa Pilipino, Honorable Gary C. Alejano. Manila Teachers, Manila Teachers Savings and Loan Association Incorporated, Honorable Berhilio S. Lacson. Mata, ang matay alagaan, Honorable Tricia Nicole Q. Velasco Caterra. PBA, Puersa ng Bayaning Atleta, Honorable Mark Aaron H. Sambar, Honorable Jericho Jonas B. Nograles. Sagip, Social Amelioration and Genuine Intervention on Poverty, Honorable Rodante D. Marcoleta. Senior Citizens Coalition of Association of Senior Citizens in the Philippines Honorable Francisco G. Datol Jr. Honorable Milagros Aquino Magsaysay. SBP Servicios Abayan Party Honorable Ricardo RJ T. Belmonte Jr. TUCP Trade Union Congress Party Honorable Raymond Democrito C. Mendoza. Yakap U. Against Corruption and Poverty Honorable Benhar B. López Jr.
Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 271 members responded to the call.
There being 271 members who responded to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 2011 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title and text of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 2011 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title and text of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 2011. Resolution informing the Senate that a quorum being present, the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Resolve as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives that the Senate be informed that a quorum being present, the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Adapted. Signed Rodolfo C. Pariñas, Majority Leader, and Danilo I. Suárez, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the adoption of House Resolution Number 2011.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 2011. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. House Resolution Number 2011 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move for the consideration of House Resolution Number 2012 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title and text of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Consideration of House Resolution Number 2012 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title and text of the resolution.
House Resolution Number 2012. Resolution informing President Rodrigo Rova Duterte that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Resolve as it is hereby resolved by the House of Representatives that President Rodrigo Rova Duterte be informed that the House of Representatives has entered upon the exercise of its functions. Adapted. Signed Rodolfo C. Pariñas, Majority Leader, and Danilo I. Suárez, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 2012.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution Number 2012. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. House Resolution Number 2012 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Concurrent Resolution Number 18 and that the Secretary General be directed to read the title and text of the resolution.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. Consideration of House Concurrent Resolution Number 18 is now in order. The Secretary General is directed to read the title and text of the resolution.
House Concurrent Resolution Number 18. Concurrent Resolution providing for the Senate and the House of Representatives to hold a joint session to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines. Resolve by the House of Representatives, the Senate conquering, that both Houses of Congress of the Republic of the Philippines hold a joint session on Monday, July 23, year 2018, at 4 o'clock in the afternoon at the session hall of the House of Representatives to hear the message of the President of the Republic of the Philippines. Adapted. Signed Rodolfo C. Pariñas, Majority Leader, and Danilo I. Suárez, Minority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 18.
There is a motion to adopt House Concurrent Resolution Number 18. Is there any objection? The chair hears none. House Concurrent Resolution Number 18 is adopted.
Mr. Speaker, in order to give the House Secretariat ample time to transmit messages to the Senate and the Office of the President on the resolutions we have just adopted, and until we have received messages from the Senate, I move that we suspend our session.
Is there any objection? The chair hears none. The session is suspended.